Good evening. On our call to order the City-County Council meeting for Monday, December 3rd, 2018. We will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you all could bow your heads or remain silent. Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, Father of all that is good and all of the universe, please watch over this body as we do the work of the city and help us remain humble and calm and civil and thoughtful in all of the decisions we put forth. This being the holiday season, please help us remember those less fortunate than us, those in need, those at war, those who are sick and needy, and anyone who has been separated from their families or has lost loved ones at this time. In your name I pray. Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Oliver. There are 23 counselors present. We have two excused absences with Counselors Clay and Johnson. The next item on our agenda is the introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor Gray.
Mr. President, I would like to recognize an old friend of mine. We have quite a history back working in the neighborhoods. Ms. Kim Boyd, the founder and president of the Hope Team. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge and recognize our Pike Township trustee-elect Annette Johnson is with us again today. Annette Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to acknowledge Mr. Dan Boots. He is a friend and a constituent who is very active in my district and is a true community leader, and he also serves as chairman of the Washington Township Parent Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to again welcome my Asfmi brothers and sisters, Georgia Cravey and Michael Torres.
Yes, I'd like to represent my brothers from the Fire Department, the President in Chief. Would you please stand?
And I would like to recognize Mr. Eric Bowes and the Boy Scout Troop 180. I would also like to recognize the new Executive Director of the Coalition of Homelessness Prevention and Prevention, Ms. Chelsea Herring Cozy.
Very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City-County Building in the Council Chambers on Monday, December 3rd, 2018 at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osely, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Wednesday, November 21st, 2018, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 402 through 405, 409, 410, and 436, 2018. Said hearing to be held on Monday, December 3rd, 2018 at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City-County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City-County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance numbers 33 and 34, general ordinance numbers 71 and 72, special ordinance number 16, general resolution numbers 20 through 24, special resolution numbers 46 through 49, Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Second.
The next item on our agenda is approval of journals, November 19th, 2018. Do I have consent?
Seven.
We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And the first item is proposal number 450, which supports the Stepping Up Initiative, a national initiative to provide better access to resources in order to address mental health concerns in incarcerated populations.
Stepping up. Group stepping up. Was this here? Step up. Thank you, Mr. President. This is City-County Special Resolution Number 50, 2018, a special resolution supporting the Stepping Up Initiative, a national initiative to provide better access to resources in order to address mental health concerns in incarcerated populations. Whereas, an estimated 2 million people with serious mental illness, approximately three quarters of whom also have substance abuse disorders, are booked into local jails each year. And whereas...
Whereas, even though there are numerous drug treatment and mental health services available, many of these individuals are unable to access these resources for a variety of reasons, and public safety personnel do not always have the resources and protocol in place to divert some of these cases, causing many of these individuals to end up being incarcerated instead of receiving treatment they need. And whereas, the National Association of Counties, the American Psychiatric Association Foundation, and the Council of State Governments Justice Center launched the Stepping Up Initiative in May 2015 to help prevent counties with those tools they need to develop cross-systems and data-driven strategies to realize measurable reductions in the number of people with mental illness and substance abuse disorders entering the criminal justice system. And... Oh, sorry. Whereas Marion County has already taken steps to address this issue with the creation of the Rubin Engagement Center, the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department's Mobile Crisis Assessment Team, and the proposed treatment programs and connect them to services to prevent or reduce their time in jail. Whereas, the Stepping Up Initiative has developed an online toolkit at stepuptogether.org to provide a wealth of continuously updated resources for counties on the latest research and best practices. Now therefore...
Be resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City-County Council proudly supports the Stepping Up Initiative, a nationwide initiative to provide better access to resources in order to address mental health concerns in incarcerated populations. Section 2, the Council further commits to working with public and private entities to build on many of the innovations and proven practices already being implemented, sharing ideas and resources across the state and country in order to advance this national initiative. Section 3, the mayor is invited to join this resolution by affixing his signature hereto, which he has done. And Section 4, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 363414, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this is such an important proposal, and I'm really proud to have a part in this. But to speak further to it, I would like Ms. Kim to come and address the council. With your permission, Mr. President.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. President, counselors, and I hope everyone really is grasping what this means for the city of Indianapolis, Marion County. This can be life-changing, and as some of the things were pointed out within the resolution, I'd just like to add a few more. I've been very beneficial to have joined in partnership via the Hope Team with Lori Buckner, with Buckner's Place, who houses individuals, men and women, with mental health illnesses. Madonna Richardson with Educational Destinations, Inc., that houses homeless veterans with mental health and drug addiction issues, as well as Ray Lay, who is on the board, the Indiana Board of NAMI, as well as Lori Buckner is also on the board of NAMI, and that is the National Alliance of Mental Illness. So these are credible organizations, these are reputable organizations with a history of helping. To Indiana in particular, while more than 425 counties across the U.S. have passed a resolution or participate in this initiative, it represents only 10% nationally of cities currently being aware of and involved in this opportunity for their city. Currently, only two counties in Indiana, Johnson and Vanderburg, have embraced this initiative. Evansville, the city of Evansville, is in the process with their county elected officials. Our neighboring states of Kentucky, Ohio, Illinois, and Michigan City have city-county leadership with their states that have embraced this initiative. As was pointed out, it was established in May 2015. But in particular, to kind of get to the gist of what it can do, of examples that have already set a precedence, on the issue of mental health and incarceration, while costs can vary from city to city, one example that it offers is that it can cost a city as much as $72,000 annually to keep an individual with serious mental illnesses in a local detention center, which I'm sure all of you are quite familiar with. Treating that same individual in a state hospital can cost $22,500 annually. So providing that same individual with treatment services within their community can be reduced in costs to approximately $7,500 and allows that person to live in a neighborhood with friends, family, and return to thrive within a community that they can call home, take ownership, and be a part of their community. For DOC, Indiana Department of Corrections, there are approximately 2,000 incarcerated, admitted veterans. That means that some of those are going into DOC not admitting that they are a veteran. Out of that number, 615 of those admitted veterans incarcerated are also homeless, and these are all males. There is only one admitted veteran female within IDOC. That's staggering, and we know there are more. So this number probably understates in that oftentimes vets do not often reveal their military status because of their mental health and/or military discharge status. 80% of homeless veterans suffer from mental illness and of substance abuse. Following housing, mental illness accompanied by substance abuse creates... Integrating mental health and substance abuse disorder treatment within community-based permanent housing is important in sustaining housing placement for formerly homeless veterans as well as non-veterans. These co-according disorders among homeless veterans continues to drive up costs to cities and taxpayers, and this initiative could help in developing wraparound treatment, engagement, if properly administered, and intervention for needed homeless people, homeless veterans, and individuals with co-according disorders. So I want to thank you for this opportunity. We look forward to hearing more and working with this council on bringing in this money, which is not alone. This is a grant that could help people in Marion County and hopefully bridge that gap between state, county, and city government, and we thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Counselors. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal numbers 438 through 440 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 438, introduced by Counselor Lewis, approves total expenditures of $1,960,769.44 for calendar year 2019 from the Community Revitalization Enhancement District, Creed, funds for various improvements benefiting the Lafayette Square International Marketplace, Creed District. Proposal number 439, introduced by Counselor Evans, approves the statement of benefits for Midwest Non-Wovens LLC, an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number 440, introduced by Counselor Holliday, approves the statement of benefits for Ryoey USA, Inc., an applicant for tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. Proposal number 441, introduced by Counselors Oliver and Simpson, referred to the Parks and Recreation Committee, approves an operating agreement for the use of Riverside Marina by the Indianapolis Parks Foundation. Proposal numbers 442 through 449 and 452 refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 442, introduced by Counselor Jackson, authorizes intersection controls at Birdwood Drive and Pepperidge Way in District 14. Proposal number 443, introduced by Counselor Cordy, authorizes a weight limit restriction on Ritter Avenue between Troy Avenue and Raymond Street in District 18. Proposal number 444, introduced by Counselor Coulter, authorizes a speed limit reduction of 25 miles per hour in the Meridian Woods Park, Meridian Woods Manor, Park Place, and Penn Park subdivisions in District 23. Proposal number 445, introduced by Counselor Adamson, authorizes parking restrictions on the west side of Rural Street between Michigan and North Streets in District 17. Proposal number 446, introduced by Counselor Adamson, authorizes one-way restrictions on Pomeroy Street between Central and Park Avenues in District 17. Proposal number 447, introduced by Counselor Fanning, authorizes parking restrictions on Guilford Avenue between 64th Street and Westfield Boulevard in District 2. Proposal number 448, introduced by Counselors Adamson, Osely, and McQuillan, amends the code to make various changes to parking meter zones to standardize hours, time limits, and charges. Proposal number 449, introduced by Counselor McQuillan, establishes interest in the purchase of special land owned by Eric and Marty Olson for certain public works projects. Proposal number 452, introduced by Counselors Osely and Adamson, reduces the speed limit and introduces no turn-on-red restrictions as a part of the pedestrian safety plan to provide a safer environment for pedestrians in the downtown mile square where there are high pedestrian concentrations. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders priority business, and the first item is proposal number 451, which is a rezoning ordinance certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on November 21st, 2018. If no counselor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the proposal will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposal will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is special orders public hearing. Proposal number 403, refer to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 403, approve a transfer of additional appropriation totaling $260,000 in the 2018 budget of the Office of Corporation Council Consolidated County General Fund to fund expert, witness, and legal contractual costs, and it passed out of committee, 7-0, and I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right. Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal 403?
Larry Vaughn, please, Mr. President. When I was watching television today and seeing the pomp and circumstances that went along with the funeral procession of one of our former presidents, George W. Bush, I just thought how proud I am to be American and to be a member of this great country that we call home, and how proud I am to be a member of this city, and that I would like to yield the rest of my time to display this sign that this city is upholding this kind of action, and I will be silent and use the rest of my time to display this sign, and I hope that you folks at home will see what's going on in this city.
Mr. Vaughn, what does that have to do with this proposal?
It has everything to do with this public hearing. When you're talking about the finances and how charter schools, so-called mayor's charter schools, are skimming 45% of the money that the state sends here off of these children, mostly black disadvantaged children who are being followed into the secondary...
Mr. Vaughn, you've said enough.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else in this audience that would like to speak to proposal number 403? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 404, refer to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Once again, thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 404, approve additional appropriation of $500,000 in the 2018 budget of Marion County Information Service Agency Enhancement Access Fund for the purchase of e-poll books. These are the books that most of the...that they use in the early voting, and they're making a move to get ready for next year. So it passed out of committee, 7-0, and Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 404? All right, seeing no one, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 405, refer to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you. Proposal 405, approve the transfer of additional appropriation, total $146,746 in the 2018 budget of Department of Business and Neighborhood Services Consolidated County General Fund to purchase four additional vehicles for the Indianapolis Animal Care Services to equip new animal control officers positioned to perform their patrol and transport duties. It passed out of committee, 7-0, and I so move.
Second.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank the Department of Business and Neighborhood Services for introducing this. This is an important addition to animal care services. They are definitely short viable working transportation for animals-related calls throughout the city, and I appreciate the support of all my colleagues.
Are there additional comments from counselors?
Yes, Mr. President.
I'm saying, I did not ask for public testimony at this point. Is there...are there any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 405?
Mr. President, sure. I believe that this is a direct result of no-kill shelters. We cannot afford to keep going out and pick up every dog that is born into a feral colony, or cat that is born into a feral colony. We should concentrate our efforts on spay-neuter programs, which is very much more humane than just getting more vans and stuff to haul these animals around, and it's just not going to get any better until we nip it in the bud, and we can't do that. I remember one time I was out on a hunting expedition one time and seen a tractor-trailer load of dead animal carcasses, mostly cats and dogs. We cannot keep on being inhumane, keep enlarging our public safety effort as far as it goes to these feral animals and having no-kill shelters. We need to nip it in the bud. This money could be spent on mobile spay-and-neuter clinics to go into the area where they have the most pervasive problems, and we would eliminate the problem at that time, but this just exacerbates it and just sends a message that we're not even trying to do anything about it except to spend more money on it in ways that is not going to even touch the instances that are happening here now with the feral populations of stray animals.
Are there any additional comments from anyone in the audience? All right, seeing none, Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President, and surprise, I agree with most of what he just said except for... In the meantime, while we wait on a comprehensive spay-and-neuter law, we do need those vehicles to transport the animals throughout the city for one of the highest-rated services that we get calls in for at the city level, our animal-related calls. So I appreciate your support from colleagues.
Thank you, Counselor. Any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 409, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Counselor Jared Evans will be reading the minutes tonight as he chaired the meeting last week. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Proposal number 409 approves additional appropriations totaling $4,689,200 in the 2018 budget of the Indianapolis Fire Department, specifically the Fire General and Fire Cumulative Funds for unforeseen expenses to salaries and benefits due to station construction delays, a new HR payroll system implementation increased over time as a result of sick and line-of-duty injuries, and to replace nine previous leased vehicles. IFD Chief Ernest Malone said that there are three main causes for them to come back to this committee for additional appropriations. He said that they are the unforeseen increase in both sick leave and limited duties of the firefighters, delay in the construction of the new firehouse in Franklin Township, and implementation of Workforce Central, which is a piece of software that will help them get better. Counselor Muscari moves, seconded by Counselor Fieser, to send proposal 409, 2018, to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 409?
Yes, this is another situation where we're now appropriating funds for unforeseen expenses. That means that we appropriate these funds because we know we have a heroin epidemic here in this town. We don't know how much it's going to cost, but it could possibly soak up over half of our public safety budget. When these firemen are called to go on runs, they can't distinguish between whether your house is burning down or whether they're going to placate some junkie who have overdosed on heroin. So I think this is a dangerous road to go down to keep appropriating. You're like chasing a ghost. You're never going to catch up with the heroin program that they have in this city when you're placating these people. They're not being arrested, they're being shepherded over, they're being placated, and they're being promoted. I even say promoted, but it comes down to this, ladies and gentlemen at home. They are spending this money for exclusively the Fire Department, and the Fire Department's job is to come and put a fire out in your house, or if you have some kind of emergency, a heart attack, or something that may be somebody that has a heart attack, you pay taxes for... you pay taxes for it, but if someone who's overdosing on heroin makes the call first, they have to go first and administer that dose of Narcoam for $6,500. Now, $6,500, and the person that they administer to is not going to go to jail or face any criminal prosecution, so I think this is dangerous. We need to evaluate how we are spending our money on public safety before the whole budget, the whole $640 million is soaked up by junkies.
Counselor Lewis.
Mr. President, I do believe we had this same conversation at the last meeting. It's inappropriate for us to call individuals junkie. Those are our family members, our friends, our acquaintances.
Agreed.
Substance abuse is serious, and it's not appropriate, and I would appreciate it if Mr. Vaughn could find another word or other words to articulate his concerns about our public safety budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will follow up on that. We don't use derogatory terms in here. And the next person who does, I will ask to be removed. Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to share that I highly doubt that when fire personnel are dispatched to an emergency, that they would not already know what kind of emergency they were responding to. They absolutely do. I know Leader Gray is a firefighter. Would you, if you'd be able to answer that, if you know if you're going to fight a fire or an ambulance run?
Counselor Gray.
The type of run is dictated by the dispatcher, and if you've been on the fire department for a while, you know that if you get a box alarm, that you're going to a fire alarm. Overdose cases are held as an EMT response and not as a fire return. So there's really no mix-up between whether you're going on a fire run or EMS run.
Thank you very much. All right, are there additional comments from councilors on proposal number 409? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 410, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 410, 2018, approves the transfer of additional appropriations totaling $1,065,300 in the 2018 budget of the Marion County Public Defender Agency to support agency-wide salary increases, increased costs of experts, moving expenses, appeals, transcripts, interpretive services, scanning of client files, for social workers and employee training. Robert Hill, chief public defender of the Marion County Public Defender Agency, stated that his agency was authorized in December 2017 to participate in initial court hearing, initial hearing court, which has not been funded this year. He said they have staffed that court, and they need this appropriation to make up the shortfall for the staffing. He said that the council has approved that funding in the 2019 budget and going forward, and it is approximately $200,000. Mr. Hill said that OFM was true to their word and helped his agency receive pay increases for his staff, and it has not been funded in their budget, but is funded in the 2019 and going forward. Counselor Muscari seconded by, moved and seconded by Counselor Oliver to send proposal number 410, 2018, to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience with an interest in proposal number 410?
Mr. President, even if we could catch up with this problem we have here in this city with drug addicts, we still wouldn't be able to pay the price. When you're talking about adding on new counselors, new probation officers, new public defenders, we're spinning our wheels because you can never catch up with that situation. I mean, this money tonight is a drop in the bucket, and I would just like to see something more creative done with the money, like spending it on work programs that we could get some benefit out of. When somebody makes the decision to turn their lives over to addiction, that's their consequences that they have to accept because we're all grown people. The city of Indianapolis should not get involved, should not involve their public safety budget, the largest section of our budget, $640 million. We should not turn that over, and I have drug addicts in my family, too, who have succumbed to drugs and died from them. There was no hope for them, and there's no hope. You can only save yourself, and you can't even do that sometimes. So for the city to go chasing after these people, trying to track them down, trying to counsel them as a throwaway of money, and it really is a throwaway of money. We're doing it tonight, and we continue to do it. We continue to placate these drug addicts, and I think it's the wrong position to take.
Enough, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience with an interest in proposal number 410? All right, seeing none, any councilors? Additional comments? Then we will proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Simpson and Feaster. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 436, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 436 approves the transfer and an additional appropriation totaling $211,000 in the 2018 budget of the Marion County Coroner's Office to address the increase in pathology costs. Alfie Ballou, chief deputy of the Marion County Coroner's Office, stated that they are asking for approval of transfer and an additional appropriation to pay pathologists, and those costs have increased because of the increase in death investigations. Ms. Ballou stated that they did not anticipate, what they did not anticipate was the cost of paying each pathologist with the rising number of death investigations. She said that it is hard to recruit pathologists due to the non-competitive pay that Indiana is offering. Ms. Ballou stated that the MCC does not like to come before the committee to ask for additional appropriations, but she works hard on getting additional revenue into their office. Ms. Ballou said that they have generated over $300,000 in revenue for the Marion County Coroner's Office this year. Counselor Feaster moved, seconded by Counselor Coats, to send proposal 4 number 36 to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 7 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 436?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, but every proposal that has come out of public safety tonight have had to do with the heroin addiction problem. The pathological findings that these coroners make of course cost money, right? So when some person ends up dead on the street, we suggest, I suggest that we know why that person is laying there stiff and cold, but the city cannot enjoin that problem. If we do, we can't do it. It's impossible. We can't keep spending money after this, hiring more staff, doing more analysis because it's just going to increase over the years. It always do increase. When you have a problem where drugs are being used, you cannot control that. Drugs take all the money, just like we have in society at large. Every time you turn your television on, there's an advertisement for some infirmity or some drug that you can use to cure that infirmity or placate that infirmity. We can never keep up with it. So if this city council should look at it in this way, the people that are doing this, it's their personal problem. They need to keep it to themselves. They don't need to be shielded from the criminal justice system. They need to go through just like everybody else, but when you placate these people, they're going to return again and again, and we're going to be spending this money for eternity and take up the whole, because it will take up, the whole public safety budget if we allow it to and not processing these people who are committing Class C felonies and letting them go back into the streets because a special team told them they could go. But this is just never going to work when we keep on spending money on every proposal that has came out of public safety tonight.
Is there anyone else in the audience with an interest in proposal number 436? All right, seeing no one, is there any council with additional comments? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board. I'm sorry, just a moment, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to, for the record, for the public at home, disagree with, he has a right to say what he wants to his public comment, but under the commission studies that I'm doing on disparaging gaps, we are paying this cost as taxpayers. It is our duty to help the neediest and those who cannot help ourselves in this city. And Indianapolis has been known for banding together and helping others, and I just want to say I think Indianapolis, Indiana should continue to band together and help those that cannot help theirselves. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. All right, if there are no additional comments, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. We'll now proceed to Special Orders Unfinished Business. There's no business under Special Orders Unfinished Business. We'll now proceed to Special Orders Final Adoption, and the next item on our agenda is proposal number 357, referred to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 357 amends the code to adopt new provisions prohibiting the sitting or lying upon the surface of a public right-of-way at certain times within the downtown mile square. Counselor McQuillan moved and seconded by Counselor McHenry to send proposal number 357 to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. The motion failed by a vote of 1 to 6. Counselor Lewis moved and seconded by Counselor Robinson to send proposal 357 to the full council with a do-not-pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 5 to 2. Typically, Mr. President, the chair moves to adopt a proposal after reading the committee report. However, I will not make that motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chairwoman Lewis. At this time, we'll go to the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to withdraw proposal number 357.
The motion's been made and seconded to withdraw proposal number 357 by voice of vote.
Aye.
All right, just a moment, please. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we have someone explain the process for withdrawing the proposal and what could happen or cannot happen after it's been withdrawn versus it being voted down?
Very good. Counsel?
Yes, Mr. President, the effect is that the proposal falls off the agenda, is no longer considered for adoption.
Immediately after the withdrawal or at the end of the calendar year?
After the voice vote.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, very good. We'll take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 400, referred to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 400 approves the designation of Marion County, Indiana, as a vote center county. Counselor Gray moved and seconded by Counselor McQuillan to send proposal number 400 to the full council with a due-pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say this is really exciting. Thank you to the election board and the election workers back there. This is going to be transformative, I think, for the electoral process in Marion County, and I am excited about this. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments from councilors? Well, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Gray. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 401, referred to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 401 approves the transfer of $321,000 in the 2018 budget of the Marion County County Assessor County General Property Reassessment Fund to convert mapping systems to the same, mapping system to the same as the city system and improve data transfer on my.indi.gov, and it was approved out of committee 6-0. I so move.
Second.
All right. Proposal number 401 is moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counselor Fanning. All right, motion carries 22 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 402, referred to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 402, a lot of what I'm doing tonight is what the controller for the council is saying. These are basically cleanups to make sure that the budgets for 2018 are taken care of and readjustment at the end of the year. Approval of a transfer of $45,000 to 2018 budget of the City County Council Consolidated City and Utility Monitoring Fund to support hiring a public policy manager. It passed out of committee 6-0, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to 1.
My apologies, that mine should be yes.
All right. Madam Clerk, can we reverse the board? All right, councilors? Very good. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 406, referred to Admin and Finance Committee. Chairman Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 406, approve a transfer of a total of $418,000 in the 2018 budget of Department of Parks and Recreation. Park General and Federal Funds, Grant Funds to purchase 14 17 vehicles to meet dependable transportation need and reduce high mileage and costs to reconcile after school meal for grant for 2018. I think that the Parks Department is losing some of those fleet vehicle. I think they had some of those vehicles, and so they're getting the opportunity to do some real, to buy some vans, and they do a great job in the summer after after meal school program grant, and so it passed out of committee 7-0, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? Counselor Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is anyone able to lay out what percentage of that total is for the vans and which is for the school meals?
The school meals is part of the vans.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's all. They're all vehicles, but they're using, they are getting better use of new vans to be able to, they have, I don't know, they got a lot of psychs they go through during the summer of school meals.
Okay, then, so the vans are used to transport the meals. Okay, great, thanks.
Counselor McHenry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question, because I noticed all the other transfers went to the departments like public safety. Why did this that is connected with the Parks Department go to Admin and Finance instead of the Parks Committee?
Mr. CFO? Please go ahead, Mr. CFO.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason was there was no Parks Committee scheduled between our two council meetings. So in order to make sure that we're able to meet the state's deadline, December 15th, it was assigned to Admin and Finance.
But why couldn't the Parks Committee admit for that then so that that will become the proper committee? And I know there is a proposal that is, another proposal that hasn't come before the committee yet either, and that's filling a position on the Parks Board.
That was at the decision of the chairs, and the president allowed That was at the decision of the chairs, and the president allowed that to be assigned to the Admin Finance in order to meet the state's deadline.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments or questions from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll come to, go to the board for our vote. The motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 407, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Counselor Evans will read the minutes for this proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman. I'm so delighted to be able to read these minutes. Proposal number 407 approves a transfer of $600,000 in the 2018 budget of the Marion County Sheriff's Office to offset medical receipts and fleet expenses. Colonel Louis Desland of the Marion County Sheriff's Office stated they are asking to transfer funds from one character to another. He said they are very proud that Sheriff Layton has, very proud and, very proud of that, and that Sheriff Layton has worked hard to spend the taxpayers' money wisely and to get their budget flat for 2018. CFO Barbara Lawrence stated that this was being driven by fleet expenses, fleet expenses and Medicaid revenue. Counsel Mascary moved and seconded by Counsel Duke Oliver to send proposal number 407 to 2018 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 22 to 1. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 408, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 408 approves a transfer of $313,000 in the 2018 budget of the Marion County Prosecutor's Office to cover employees' costs for the remainder of 2018, as well as to purchase materials and to purchase technological equipment. Counsel Fanning moved and seconded by Counsel Coats to send proposal number 408, 2018, to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Counselor Coulter.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have one question. Can you explain a little the covering employee costs for the remainder of 2018, the reasoning behind that, please?
Mr. Pres, uh, yes. Mr. President, if someone were here in the off, uh, audience from the prosecutor's office, I'd invite them up to answer that question, or possibly our CFO.
Is there anyone in the audience from the prosecutor's office? Counselor Simpson.
It was pay raises for 2018. They were committed to raising the employee's salary, and they had money left over, so they were able to grant those raises. And so that's just part of the deal, that the prosecutor's been working very hard to get his, get his people pay raises and stuff like that. So that was the reason. It was giving them a raise.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Simpson is correct. Both the public defender and the prosecutor, they did agree to some pay adjustments at budget time, and they alerted us then that we would see some appropriations and transfers in order to cover it for the year.
Very good. Are there any additional questions from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll come to immediate vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 411, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 4 number, number 411 approves a transfer of $190,000 in the 2018 budget of the Pub, Office of Public Health and Safety to purchase a vehicle and equipment to perform customer service in the field, a replacement emergency generator at the backup dispatch center, computer hardware to be used by the public safety communications staff in support of the CAD and other systems, plus computers that are used to support the firehouse alerting system. Al Stovall, chief of Public Safety Communications, stated that this transfer of $190,000 will allow them to purchase equipment to provide a mobile service vehicle to provide assistance to public safety agencies. This transfer also allows them to replace a 25-year-old generator for a backup public safety answering point that currently failed during a storm. He said that PSC supports the firehouse alerting system, which is used for dispatch, are overall, are overdue for a refresh. Chief Stovall said that the bulk of the $190,000 will be for the generator, and the remaining funds will cover the expenses outlined in the proposal. Counsel Oliver moved, seconded by Counsel Coats, to send proposal number 411, 2018, to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 412, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Counselor Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 412, 2018 approves certain public-purpose grants totaling $310,954 from the Drug-Free Community Fund. David Hortmiller, deputy director, Office of Finance and Management, stated that this is the annual process that they come before the committee to outline the recipients of the drug-free community funds, and these funds have already been approved in the 2019 budget. Natasha Chitum, project, project assistant, Drug-Free Indy, stated that the selection process is done on a volunteer basis by some board and coalition members from the community. She said that the selection process is anonymous and done on an annual basis. Counsel Coats moved, seconded by Counsel Oliver, to send proposal number 412 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Counsel Lewis.
Mr. President, permission to abstain. Boys and girls clubs may apply for these dollars at some point.
Thank you. Any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 22 to 0 with one abstention. There is no business under special service district councils, and there is no business under new business. So the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The doctored agenda for this meeting of the council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
The chair recognizes Counsel McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment: by Counsel McQuillan in memory of Harold Lynn Meiser and Fred Pheasenfield; by Counsel Adamson in memory of Pat Pfaff, Karen K. Leonard and Florence Ford; by Counsel Osley in memory of Franklin Minton, Melvin Henry and Dominic Agbaniza; by Counsel Holliday in memory of Dorothy A. D.A. Moore Byers and Lauren Marie Rink; by Counsel Mascary in memory of Thomas A. Cato. Mr. President, I would like to move the rec, the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named, and I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. A further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body and the letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advised of this action.
Thank you, Counsel McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. And before we depart, I wanted to wish everyone a happy holidays and, and season's greetings. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.